Excellent.
Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the August nineteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the school committee. Call the meeting to order five fifteen. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we will call Samantha, if you don't mind starting, please.
Samantha Ross, Secretary.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Erica Trilio.
Seth, Superintendent of Schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Antonella Rochilla.
Kate Lyden.
Me Talenta.
Heather Brown, Director of Curriculum.
And Mr. Mackey, we don't have a visual on that screen still, but we can proceed if you're okay with it. Just let me know if somebody's waving or something.
There's nobody out here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes. I'd take a motion for the June seventeenth, please.
Move to approve the June seventeenth, twenty twenty four regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Antonella in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Next.
We'll approve the July one, twenty twenty four executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Antonella in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. And one more, please.
We approve the July one, twenty twenty four regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah. Second by Antonella in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero.
Welcome.
The committee and subcommittee communications. Amy, would you like to start?
Um, I have nothing to add.
Okay, great.
Amy.
Um, we met a few weeks ago for LPVAC and they told us that they're moving along. The process is moving along for the electric buses.
Oh.
Now East Alamo should be looking at getting five buses.
This year?
October, they're hoping for the rollout. Um, there's still more to come, but that was their sweet plan, I think. Yeah.
It's very exciting.
They're gonna reach out to other districts that are using them for procedures for schools and.
We should make a big deal out of that somehow. Maybe the news or something, you know?
Yeah. I think they can, they see like the Amazon trucks that are electric and the electric, they really like notice it and get excited about it.
Yeah, very cool. They look different. Have you seen?
Um, I've only seen Boston Publix and you can tell.
Yeah.
You can tell it looks more, uh, like the lighting's different.
Excellent. Thank you. It's Noah.
Nothing at this time.
Sarah?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, I, uh, I joined the, um, town book club for the walkable cities. So I started that last Wednesday. It's, uh, in conjunction with the deputy town manager and some other folks from town, so.
Nice.
We're talking about the center square development, so kind of trying to keep in tune with that.
Very nice.
It's good to have you on there.
Yes, just my particular collection. Good job, I guess, right? Okay, so anyhow, uh, opportunity for visitors to address the committee. We have none this evening. And we will move right along to presentations. Approve, uh, leave the field trip for either Sunny's Place or for.
High Meadows.
High Meadows. Do you wanna both come up if you don't mind?
Aye.
Please?
Alright. So this, we are asking for approval for our yearly eighth grade field trip. Um, historically, it has been at High Meadows and we, um, after polling the students, we also are looking at Sunny's Place this year and, um, neither of the contracts are signed as yet. So we are asking for permission for, I guess, both of them so that when school starts, we can take a look at full financials and make a decision as an eighth grade team as to which, as to where we're gonna go.
Amy, are the costs different? Uh, we have one for, um, let's see, where is this one going? Sunny's Place.
Yeah.
Sunny's, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Sunny's Place is greater.
Okay.
It's, um, the cost is higher. Um, uh, but this year, um, when we polled the kids, the kids were not really happy with where we were going.
Yeah, and we didn't really have time to kind of process it as teachers, but, um, they had said last year and then this year again that, um, High Meadows was kind of run down. The food quality had, um, from what they thought it was gonna be to what it is, wasn't so much. A lot of the areas to play in were not kept up or there was no equipment. So, um, we wanted to kind of take a better look at that as a group and kind of make a decision.
Okay.
September before we sign anything, but.
And the date would be the same?
Yeah.
Either?
Those have availability that day.
Six.
Six.
Okay.
Yeah.
Of chaperones, buses, all of those sorts.
Yeah, so we have, um, we had been looking at different bus companies over the summer. Um, one of the, one of the, um, numbers we're waiting for was how much the busing was last year. But if we take a look at how much was spent at High Meadows versus how much the students paid to go, um, it looks like it should be about the same. Um, with the charter bus, one of the reasons we wanted to go with the charter bus this year is we wanted to see if we can get the kids back before the end of the school day. Um, and, uh, last year, they, the kids did not get back until six thirty P M.
Wow.
And it was a really, really long day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Good. Any other questions from the committee?
Did you say how much it would be for Sunny's Place?
About five minutes. Is that the one we had?
That's what we had.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, in the, in the letter.
No, I thought that's for, that's what they paid last.
Oh, you're right.
So Sunny's Place, um, for two hundred and sixteen people, which is gonna be the maximum that we could carry because of just, um, the spots on the bus. Um, if, um, if they waive the sales tax because we're nonprofit.
Yeah.
School trip, it'll be about thirteen, almost about thirteen thousand eight hundred. So it's gonna be, um.
Sixty-five bucks.
About sixty-five, yeah.
Oh, so it's cheaper than that.
Yeah, it's the busing. It's the, uh, the busing.
Oh, plus the bus.
What time does busing, what's the earliest distance buses can bring the kids back without messing up the transportation?
That, that, that has been the problem.
Like how late? So it's like not six thirty, but is it?
They'll take back by one fifteen.
But again, after.
Yeah, so they would, the, the last round of buses usually finishes somewhere around four fifteen, four thirty.
So they still wouldn't be getting off, no?
So they would be heading, um, you would have some that could head out earlier than that, but you probably use.
First.
No, first student, they used first student last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be like a huge cost. For charter.
I know.
Yeah.
Also, did you have that quote for?
For the quote that we have, the best quote that we had was from Peter Pan Bus Lines or fifty-six hundred. And that's for, uh, two hundred, uh, four buses, uh, total number, um, yeah, total number two hundred and sixteen seats.
Seventy-three. Any three.
Do they do any kind of fundraising or anything to?
We are hoping that was one of the things, the reason why we're coming to the school committee so early this year is we would really like to fundraise and be able to get the cost down to something reasonable like fifty dollars per person.
Yeah.
Um, students paid seventy-five dollars per person last year.
A PTO does typically help, like two thousand dollars, but, um, divide that by two hundred kids, it's ten dollars.
A buck, yeah.
Um, so yeah, we were hoping to kind of start off and, and have a group of students help us with some ideas and things like that.
That's why I'd hate for any kid to not be able to go because of the price.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had that conversation and we, I think we did help a few.
Yeah, we, with their work, there was some, um, we were able to help a few kids, but, um, we didn't know until later that some of the kids who didn't go.
Why?
Um, didn't go because they had to pay for something else.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, we wanted to make sure that this is accessible, um, to as many kids as possible.
In my daughter's school district on, uh, field trip forums, there's a place where you can donate more money for a kid who needs it. So I don't know if that's against our policy, but I, like even with yearbooks, like I want to buy another yearbook for a kid who can't. So if that's something we can put on our field trip request for their.
Yeah, that's a good. Yeah, like a roundup, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, just. So I'm including this much for blah, 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 and it's completely voluntary.
One of the elementary schools go to High Meadows, or not to High Meadows, to Sunny's Place as their fifth grade experience this past year?
I believe they may have.
Okay. Something to think about too, like A, like explore how they managed it and then B, to be thinking, now over time, that might be a recycled field trip for some of the kids.
Hmm. The, the one difference is if it's one school, fifth grade that went, they're traveling with half the kids that we would be.
Oh, great. I'm just saying they may have been able to figure out like the costs in a different way. They may have a different way of managing the buses if they've already done it once. I feel like it was Maple Shade.
It was, I don't think it was Mountain View.
It wasn't Mountain View. I feel like Maple Shade went last year. I remember approving that for some reason, but they might have some of that information already.
Hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts? I would tend to, uh, entertain a motion to approve both and either.
I move to approve the June sixth, twenty twenty five field trip to Sunny's Place in Summers, Connecticut, or High Meadows in Granby, Connecticut for the eighth graders, for the eighth grade Berchland Park field trip as presented.
Excellent. Motion made by Kate.
Okay.
Second by Antonella. Any other discussion? You'll know when you make a decision before school starts or soon thereafter?
Probably soon thereafter. Um, Peter Pan was, um, uh, nice enough to hold the, um, the contract open for us until we heard from the school committee that it was an okay, that we would be okay for the field trip.
And then you'll send along once you decide the details and the decision? Excellent, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we have review policy recommendations from the East Alamo Public School Diversity and Equity Steering Committee.
Okay. Your packets, uh, you have the first round of, um, policy revisions that are dealing with the policies that, um, are in section A of the policy manual. Um, let me take you back, um, to what the diversity and equity steering was attempting to do. So last year, the committee wanted to look at policies that dealt, that dealt with, um, non-discrimination, obviously putting structures in place so that you're eliminating discrimination, but also, um, policies just that center around building culture, building climate to make sure that we're moving forward in a way that, um, is really creating an atmosphere in ELPS where everyone feels comfortable and feels like they can connect, and most importantly, that they belong, uh, which is actually one of the questions that we have on our climate and wellness survey. So you have a variety of policies, I think six overall, some of which are revised due to, um, or revised from existing policy and some are new, brand new policies that other districts may have had, um, a version similar to this. Um, and it really was, uh, one, it's, um, pretty comprehensive work. It was a lot of work, uh, took us longer than we had expected, but that generally happens when you're revising policy. We had both, um, Ms. Trilio and Ms. Talenta, um, on the committee and, uh, Ms. Brown was, um, co-facilitator of the group. And we also had, um, a guest, unexpected guest who stayed with us throughout the entire year, um, Mr. Schultis, uh, who works for DESI but is the Western Mass Advisor around policies such as this. There's more to his.
He's part of the Safe Schools.
Safe Schools Initiative, yeah.
Technical help like policy work, but also professional development.
So there was a lot of work that went into this and then what our job became when these were handed off in June was bringing them back through so that they fit within the policy manual, um, as it exists online and is, um, following the MASC format, as well as looking at how much, um, in terms of procedure and so forth, can we implement and implement with fidelity? Uh, and so that, this is the result of that, um, worth this summer and more work to come. You'll have more policies. And we're very excited for that, um, policies to review over the next couple of meetings. So we start out with non-discrimination and in your packets, um, it looks like this. The first one on top, policy AC, non-discrimination, is the revised policy. And then after that, um, is the existing policy. I don't know what, um, the committee's, um, prerogative is in terms of, do you want me to read the policy?
No, read over this one.
It's like, ah.
I know Antonella's holding it.
So. This one, um, is somewhat straightforward in terms of, it, it basically is one, looking to in that first paragraph, develop a paragraph that is more current than some of the paragraphs you see in our policies. And bringing the entire policy more into the twenty-first century, probably the good way to say it. Did I miss anything there?
No, I was just gonna add that in addition to James Schultis, we also had, uh, Vanetta Lightfoot, um, the Director of Equity and Inclusion and Belonging for LVP EC. L P V E.
And, and Ms. Lightfoot's gonna be, she's part of our steering committee. I don't know that James will come back. He might. He seemed pretty, I don't, he wasn't making any money from us, so I don't know if DESI's paying him.
He's very knowledgeable.
Yeah, he's incredibly knowledgeable and he was having.
Who was it?
A gentleman by the name of James Schultis.
He said Lightfoot.
Oh, Vanetta Lightfoot, I'm sorry. She's the, um, E I B Director for the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. So she works with all seven districts, but she is a member of our diversity and equity.
In addition, of course, to a lot of parents who are on this as well.
So that's AC.
That's AC.
Yep.
Okay. Moving right along. Um, ACAB is a policy, um, with regard to sexual harassment. This is something, um, somewhat of a, a new element. Uh, if you research at least the, um, MASC policy manuals that are online, they don't necessarily go, um, and add sexual misconduct, but this was something that, um, the group who was revising this felt, um, really strongly about. So, um, in red, you see different areas that we revised from the original policy. The original policy was just dealing with sexual harassment. And so then this brings into play, um, policy and understanding of a little bit of both, sexual harassment, obviously the policy you were hoping that you were able to educate and define for everyone what sexual harassment may be and then therefore hopefully prevent it and eliminate it from, uh, ELPS. But this goes into, um, further detail with, uh, sexual misconduct, um, both within the ELPS or, um, actions by others that, uh, may happen outside of ELPS, but if they're part of ELPS, could impact us and them. So you have that addition, just like in the first policy, you have the original, and I, I thought it was, uh, relevant, uh, so people may remember that when we went through the entire policy manual, the Mass Association of School Committees, what we did was we revised each section, we went through each section, but then we created a procedure manual from that where in some cases, you may have procedures where a step here or there could change, but the overarching policy itself would not change. So it allowed for, um, procedures to stay current without necessarily having to go through the whole policy review process. Um, so I wanted you to have currently is in the procedure manual for the sexual harassment policy or ACAB. And this procedure has been fortunately utilized, uh, a few times over the last few years and, um, it's been very helpful as a guide as we go through any situation.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, now we get to, um, one of our new, so connected policies.
Can I ask a question on the?
Really?
Yes. Uh, manual?
Mm-hmm.
Um, instruction of students and instruction of staff. Do we have clear understandings of when that is happening?
So for staff, they do a training, school year starts every year. Um, for students, it's not as clear because it depends on, um, age appropriateness. Uh, a lot more of this happens at the middle school level and health classes, at the high school level and health classes. But I think as we start to implement, um, health standards and, um, health standards, the framework, obviously it's part of what, just the standards, you're gonna see more of these discussions. It's adapting it to age level to whom we're speaking.
Yeah, I'm just thinking too, like if we're putting this in approved manual, we should have some record of when that instruction starts.
Mm-hmm.
On, if that's not happening, how are we making students aware of the guidelines by which they should be moving forward with?
Right.
Especially if we're seeing it. If we're stating and adopting both the procedure and a manual that are speaking to students needing access, then we should have documentation that they've been talked around what that manual says they have the right to.
Right.
Um, is sexual harassment in the code of conduct? Not that that replaces instruction.
Is not in the code of conduct. Part of it is.
Yeah.
And.
That could guide the instruction.
So as they review the code of conduct, which, um, they do have class assemblies that happens more at Berchland and the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they do a lot of work around, obviously, the bullying policy and they do a lot of work around hazing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but this could be added into that.
This is very specific as to what the instruction should be. We have a definition of sexual harassment and instruction and what to do with someone's victim of it. Clear delineation of the sanctions brought against the person who was the perpetrator of the sexual harassment. So we're delineating all of these pieces. I just think as a body who's responsible for the policy and approving it, we need to make sure that we have some way of knowing that this actually happened.
Yep.
Not only for students, but also.
Hmm.
Staff will happen on the, the, really the second day of their reporting back to work. They have a training that, um, they go through and then have to sign off on and then get a digital signature. So that happens every. Students who, as I said, has come a little bit more informally through whether it be class assemblies, then following up with the health classes and on the elementary level, it's less so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're not specific that.
So we can make those revisions.
I'm just saying either we need to have a measure by which we can say this actually occurred or we need to revise, because I don't feel comfortable putting forward a manual that's saying here that students are receiving age appropriate information, instruction that will include the following, one, two, three, four, six, seven bullets. It's very specific. I don't, I don't know, having had two children in the schools that I've ever seen a copy or a digest of this policy.
No, I don't think it has, other than, uh, as Ms. Brown said in the code of conduct, what, what's referenced in the code.
Well, how do we address that?
Well, we can, and one, two things, we can, um, put it into the class assemblies. Um, the tough part would be the elementary because they don't have class assemblies.
But do they have second step?
They do.
And then could it be put in as a lesson in second step where we're saying? But I think again, if this is a policy that is affecting a set of procedures that is in effect from the beginning of the school year, that that lesson needs put at the beginning of the academic year, like, because if a child then has a claim in January and they're focusing on it since December because it's happened prior to them knowing what to do with that information, in particular with most vulnerable kids, which are. Situation that they're in.
Right.
I know, is that like information for the parents though too, age? I mean, imagine going over this for the first graders.
Well, it does say in an age appropriate.
Right, that, that's why we would have to do, do it differently at a, at a.
But I just don't think we as a body can approve a manual and a policy if we don't have a metric by which to say that this was delivered.
I agree.
Can I just point out that the instruction of students, I believe, is in our current procedure manual?
Right.
Okay, so it's.
Looking for a metric.
I know, I get that. I just want to make sure it's not new. Yeah.
Not new. I'm just saying that since this is now backed up in front of us.
Yep.
If our manual is saying something, it's not a way by which to say that yes, that has occurred. And we as a body need to ensure that we have a way of saying that this hasn't.
Right.
I don't, I don't know that I've seen the sexual harassment manual before this meeting.
No, because we had, we had revised it with the, um, original version of the entire manual. And so now it's, just as you said, coming back relevant and makes sense.
This is ACAB.
ACAB, yeah.
Okay. All right, can we readdress this or modify or develop some sort of? ACAB dash R?
Uh, we didn't do ACB.
Dash R is the manual.
Yeah.
Oh, right, right, yeah. ACB is that correct?
So ACB is, so this is brand new and this is a policy, um, that extends on the on discrimination and this specifically goes into, um, non-discrimination on the basis of gender identity, transgender, non-binary and gender expansive students. And provides more specific definitions and more specific goals. Um, and this is something that, uh, the group who was working on these policies in the steering committee did an extensive amount of research above and beyond, uh, some of the resources we offered, because there are districts that have this type of policy already in place. And so this would be a, a first for ELPS to have, um, this type of policy. Some of it is captured as you see at the end, um, to the legal references, you know, is captured to enact relative to gender identity, enact relative to gender identities. So we have fallen back on that law, um, in different discussions throughout the years with actions that we may have taken as an administration.
On page two?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, page three, undernames and pronouns. Is, is a fourteen something that is written into Massachusetts state law or is that something we're adopting as a district?
No, that's actually written into law. I think that was, and actually that's one of the changes we made because the, the group, um, put forth some excellent work. But I think it was important to make that explicit so everyone knows that fourteen is the age that schools have to operate on where, um, students start to have real independent decision-making power. And that also carries over to, um, IEPs.
Is this all reviewed with the kids?
This is a new policy, so we haven't had this, this is coming to you approval. And then we would, uh, all of this, what I'd like to do is once approved, send them out with a message to all families, similar to what we did with the bullying, um, prevention and policy updates there, uh, regarding the plan. And just talk about, you know, as we, similar to how I introduced all of this, as we continue to review our policy, our goal is to make sure that we continue to cultivate, um, a climate within ELPS that is welcoming, inclusive and one to which all of our students feel like they can, they can belong and connect.
So is the goal to go over this with the kids?
Eventually. Eventually.
At all ages?
I think those conversations change depending on the level of the use, yeah.
Well, that's why I don't think that.
I mean, this doesn't have direct instruction.
Okay.
With it. Um similar to.
For protection.
This is more for protection, right? So this is more for us to have a policy to fall back on when situations happen.
Okay.
When situations happen frequently. And that's not just in ELPS, that's everyone.
For clarification, the students under fourteen need parental consent. But is that for informal too? Is that, what's that difference, formal versus informal? Um sorry, in some.
Names and pronouns?
No, 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 informally. Uh after a student requests a name change, formally or informally.
But so formal requests goes to the um actual administration and under fourteen, um parents need to be involved in that request?
Formally or informally?
Uh, a little bit of both.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, we're gonna communicate with parents that, you know, this is a request uh that has been made and we want to make sure that we're communicating formally with the parents.
Yeah.
Formal.
It does happen, you know, if a student is asking to be called something, but then maybe the parent doesn't, so I didn't know.
Correct.
Formally versus.
So under fourteen, that would be more informal?
Yeah.
Formal becomes when they actually put it in writing?
And their records are changed?
Yes, so DESI has an avenue that you can change.
Yeah.
All of that. So it can be reflected on their MCAS forms, it can be reflected on, it's, you go through the SAC system.
There's also a line on page four at the bottom that says it's italicized, it's not a free school from affirming and supporting the student's gender identity and then in parentheses, name and pronoun at any age.
That's what I was wondering, because that, that does come up a lot with younger students. And that's, I guess, that that's informal if we're not changing it in.
Right.
You know, power school or something like that.
And that's a question, because we've had this come up without having this policy. Um anyone under fourteen, we have gone back to the parents and asked, is this a change that you want? And if you do, would you please put it in writing? And then we go through the process.
But is that in the policy anywhere or is that just something we're?
This is the first time we've had a policy.
Right, but I had, I don't see that language that you just described or would that be like in the manual?
That's in DESI's guidelines. We don't have a manual on it. So when we've gotten those requests, we've gone back to DESI's guidelines on this.
Okay.
And we followed their guidelines.
Okay, do we say that anywhere in this?
No, this is reflective of DESI's guidelines. I'm understanding.
I understand what you're saying, but the part that you added just then to say that we can go back to the family to confirm, I don't see that anywhere in here.
Oh, no, yeah, so we can add it, that's why we.
I'm just wondering, like, should that be there? Because if a principal or a counselor is hired, doesn't know past practice, how would we support them in adhering to the past prac- past practice, which has been to notify the family? If the policy just says, this does not preclude the school from affirming and supporting the student's gender identity at any age through the use of a name or pronouns. That to me kind of speaks to the opposite of what we're saying we do. That make sense or no?
Yeah.
Basically, any, anyone under fourteen who are communicating with the parents on these things.
So if they're fourteen or older, we're not communicating with the parents?
If a student requests us not to communicate with the parents, then legally we're bound not to communicate with the parents.
Really?
Yeah. There are court cases out there.
Yeah.
On that.
I'm just wondering if we need to clarify that, because in that same paragraph, we're saying the exact.
Well, does that fall into the formal, non formal portion, so that would they require formal?
No, it actually says the exact opposite.
Which part, where are you reading it?
Under privacy confidentiality and student records. At the very bottom, it says, student who is fourteen years of age or over or who has entered the ninth grade may consent to disclosure of information from their student record. If a student is under fourteen and is not yet in the ninth grade, only the student's parents has the authority to decide on disclosures and other student record matters. Clarification from DESI, this is related to permanent record changes. This does not preclude the school from affirming and supporting the student's gender identity, name and pronouns at any age.
And I think to the question that Ms. Leiden asked, that would be informal. Because if a student's asking, but they're not looking for it to be reflected in records with DESI.
I, I understand that point, but I'm saying a ten year old is asking to be called something different at school than what their parents are, have the expectation that they're being called, if we're not explicit in saying that we're gonna ask the family.
I, I would agree with you, I think we have to add that.
It has to trigger, so an informal request would trigger asking the parents.
Because if a new administrator or a new guidance counselor or someone else comes in and the policy is what they're trying to follow and we don't have something in there that says that, then this paragraph contradicts itself.
Is that our intention that if an informal request is made by a ten year old that we would go to the parents?
Basically, our rule of thumb now is based on DESI's guidelines. And so anything that's requested, formal or informal, um for under, students under fourteen, we work with the family.
And require a formal request from them to change it?
No.
No, we don't.
And if you don't want your, your records.
If you don't want your records.
But you want them to be allowed to be.
The parent can make an informal.
Correct.
The student may not, at ten years old, the student may not have an informal.
Right, you would need the parents.
That's what you're asking for.
I think yes, because.
In the wording.
Saying the exact opposite. It's saying like what we have in place is that we're calling or we're making contact with the family. What this is saying is that we don't have to, so all I'm asking for is clarification.
Oh, because this does not preclude.
Right, so which one are we following?
I was reading it and I agree that, you know, the parent thing is not clear here, but if the parent and the child are, are um requesting this, then it's the staff needs to affirm it. So I can't just say, I'm not gonna call you that if that, does that make sense?
It does, but I don't think that reads like that, like when I read that, I'm the one who's charged with.
So it's not the school, it's the staff. This does not preclude the staff from affirming.
Right, but.
Is that what you mean?
Thing is, if they're.
Does that help it?
Yes, and where's the communication with families, I think?
I think that what seems to be the confusing part is that when you're dealing with students under fourteen, formal or informal, um if they don't want state records changed, um we still have an obligation to discuss that request with the family. You know, how.
Heather, that make sense?
Yeah, I, I was just trying to clarify that, I think that it's, I, I get where that's not, where that's not clear, but I think what it's coming from is, and it's not clear, right? If this is what the parents and the kid are requesting, then we need to honor it.
All of that policy.
Even if it's, even if on my attendance sheet, it still says this. If the family's asking for this, I need to affirm it, does that make sense? So that language needs to be added and then clarified.
And I think there's also the sensitive issue of if the child and their family on two different pages, even a young child. And so we didn't, we got into that in that, those committee discussions and it's such a sensitive.
It's a really challenging situation.
Yeah, and you have to, you know, approach it with such care and on such an individual basis with each child and family. But I think we also tried to, obviously, looking at the law is the most important thing in protecting people. But I think that wasn't really reflected in here, because there's just no way, great way to reflect the sensitivity that you need to have with families um when this kind of situation arises.
So we're about to work on that?
We'll work on revising that, yeah. So that reflects um the actual intentions that we had.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on ACB?
Let's go back to rest locker rooms and changing.
Where are you at?
Next stage. You know, the intent of the policy is to ensure that a protected class has the space that they need in order to transition, in order to feel validated in, in their current um their current movement towards um transitioning or their cisgender. I just think we still have an obligation for the students who are not transitioning, who are now in a situation where they're sharing spaces and may not fully understand the situation that they are also in. And we don't have language in here that provides access to single stall facilities for students who are maybe not comfortable or who maybe.
There's a paragraph that talks about cisgender students may feel uncomfortable, that one. Where they, they would have the same access to utilize an all gender alternative.
Facilities, Sarah, to offer that?
Uh, we, we do in, in most of the buildings.
But not holistically, though. In order to say that, we'd have.
You'd have to use, in elementary schools, we'd probably have to use a staff bathroom. Right, which locks.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like if we're putting these in place, it needs to make sure that we have the logistics also in place to affirm on both sides around. That everyone feels safe.
So in the elementary schools, we would have to designate.
You'd have to designate probably a.
What do we call it, we call, an alternate?
All gender alternative.
Yeah. Do we have those? Do we physically have those in the buildings?
Okay. So. And we've done that um in other buildings when needed.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think probably at this point, we should just have it in all the buildings, whether needed or not.
And then do we have information, how is that information then communicated to students? I think that's the other piece.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, we don't have a policy like this, but generally, uh we have, again, a lot of this is based on DESI's guidance. And so um what we've done is we've sat down, because there have been discussions of this uh with parents and with students. And we've offered um alternatives and plans and tried to work with families and students to make sure everybody's feeling comfortable. So it becomes individual plans, which is more or less what this is also saying, that each situation is.
But the access isn't, so I'm saying how is the access broadly communicated? So that to me seems like something that.
In terms of anybody being able to.
Right.
Utilize those spaces?
Yes.
Um at the high school, they actually state that um more and more as they've gotten into these situations. Um and then at the other schools, you're right, we don't make a general statement.
But even stating it as the situations arise, to me seems like we're, and I, I'm making an assumption here, because I'm not in the buildings every day, a reaction to it rather than a proactive statement that, based on new policies enacted by the school committee, this is how we're treating restrooms, locker rooms and changing facilities at ELHS. Everyone has access to a single stall facility for the purposes of changing, for the purposes of using the restroom, so that.
So I think if we adopt this, that helps with the creation of an announcement like that.
We really should look at our locker room layout in the new building.
In the new building, I remember we had, they had a few uh single stall changing rooms with the shower and everything. So we did take that into consideration in the design.
Okay, and if you remember the bathrooms, uh we have the.
Upstairs, we have the single stall, downstairs is airport style.
Yep.
Locker rooms are airport as well.
So you have the ability to go a couple different directions.
But the point is to um let the students have options. Especially at the younger levels, which they don't exist now, but if we create those.
One of the examples they have in the guidance here is um if you're working with the parents, the nurse's bathroom, you know, so.
And we do have that in all buildings.
But again, that goes on both sides, like I, I'm only saying it because I, I picture potentially like a ninth grader who does not necessarily know the anatomy and what they might be exposed to in a locker room if they don't know that they have the option not to go into the locker room. I feel like we have, we have to ensure that we're messaging so that everybody is aware of what the options are.
Yeah, it's a hard.
It's very hard and it's not meant to be insensitive towards a protected class, it's just meant to state that if we have students who are charged with protecting on, across the board, then we have to make sure that we're communicating that there are options for all and not just options for some.
Right.
Right, putting a policy in place, I just want to be clear that then we have to put the actions in place, they're gonna ensure that access is.
Well, we have to create the options in some of the schools still.
Agreed, so we're putting policy, I just want to make sure we're following it up with action. Well, they just.
So if the policy is approved, um the next step is take it to the leadership team and start working on, you know, a general message for all policies, but then how they put into place just what Ms. Trullio was talking about in terms of how are we gonna message that out so that everyone has this option, should they want to take that option? Um and so that would be something that we have to work through as a leadership team.
Okay.
I think that was our lens, though, again, looking back at the charge of the committee was the kind of overall messaging of, everybody is safe here. And I think hopefully, I think it's reflected in this and most other, you know, um pieces of this. And it is all about the messaging and I think keeping the messaging as positive as possible, you don't want to make people feel like outsiders. It's kind of just, we should be moving towards this just being a conversation that's within our normal vernacular and we just move on. Everybody's safe here, there's some all gender bathrooms for people that are more comfortable with that. Moving on, that's just, that, that was how we approached it. We want to be respectful and inclusive and make it a positive to feel safe.
Okay, anything else on that one? So do we need changes to that section as well? On ACB for the.
I just.
Locker rooms.
It's more about the messaging.
Well, the messaging and then, what is it, dash R, is that what we call?
ACAB.
Like ACAB dash R is the actual guidelines and procedures. Do we need then ACB dash R so that we have guidelines and procedures as to how this is going to be?
Can, um generally, what, once we have a policy, we then develop what how we're going to message something like that and what the procedure will be. We haven't done that yet.
Can we draft a manual language prior to policy being adopted? So that we can view them both and make sure there's alignment before we.
Sure.
I'm just thinking like, because there's a lot more involved in this policy in terms of how is this set up within a school to ensure safety for all? How is this set up in a school to ensure that the messaging is there as well? And it is new, so I think that if not done well from the onset, then we actually risk not making people feel safe.
Correct.
So if we're going to approve the policy, then I would say we should be approving the policy and the manual in conjunction with one another personally, but that's just my opinion.
More just the procedure, right?
Yes, like the procedure, that's a part of the larger manual.
Yeah. So we can work on developing some procedures.
And then can you just walk me through, Gordon, because I don't, I'm not tending to understand, um especially when it comes to the MIAA. Can you talk us a little bit about what the MIA's guidance is around transgender, non binary, gender expansive?
MIAA or MASC?
MIAA, because that's what's referenced here in terms of the guidelines for intramural and dysphalastic and physical education classes.
Um basically, MIA follows what the school's policy that had been put in place and whatever the individual has determined to be their gender. So they don't necessarily step in and say, you can't compete, can compete. They're going to support what the school's policy in place, um that is in place in terms of their competitions, they don't necessarily, MIA doesn't get involved in PE.
Okay.
But they, they also go through and have um their emphasis on being more inclusive and providing more opportunities for students.
So then is that part of this policy connected to a section that's two paragraphs down, gender based activities, rules, policies and practices? Are those two linked then, saying that regardless? So that there's the ability of a, for a student who may be biologically male but is identifying as a female to now participate in the female ski team? Is, are those two saying that that's what we're, we're endorsing?
Um I'd have to do more research on, on that specific piece.
Okay, I, I just want us to know like what, what we're saying when we're adopting policies of policies, I guess. Like if the MIA is endorsing that or if the state has said the why, then I just want to be really clear. So that when we do get questions, we as a body are under.
Have something, yeah.
What actually adopted. I think they do endorse that. The MIA does endorse that. Yes.
And then is that what the policy is saying?
This is in mind, but I can.
But I'm saying we don't have.
We can pull that, yeah, that.
I haven't read the MIA's policy. I don't know if anybody else on the committee has. I just haven't read it and I would want to know.
Right. To what you're referencing.
To what extent.
Yep.
Are they doing that?
Yep.
So that we know.
So I can, I can pull that.
We're saying yes to.
Actually, no, someone is on the board of the MIA, so. I'll pull that.
Okay. Okay, anything else on ACB? So that one will come back as well.
Sounds like all of them might be coming back.
Uh, or AC or we'll go with AC.
Go with AC, okay. We hadn't voted on it, so.
No, I know, but I'm.
Okay.
Like a good AC, but.
All right. Okay, um, continuing to become more specific with definitions and so. Policy AC, non-discrimination. This was um. Also something that this group came up with. They did a ton of work. Um, and to. Um, one, create a better understanding of what neurodiversity means and entails. And um make sure that there's no discrimination on the basis of neurodiversity. So again, it becomes more specific off your policy AC, non-discrimination. So this will be brand new.
With an adoption of a policy such as this, I just want to make sure, like, when we look at number one, second page of this. Are we going to have a way showing that we have provided training to staff members to ensure that they understand neurodiversity? And can support neurodivergent students appropriately through the implemented, through implementing principles of universal design for learning. Are we going to have? Training, like a district by training? Are we going to have that as a mandated function of every year's professional development? If the policy.
It's not at the level of mandate, um, which is why the wording has been placed the way it is. Because the mandated trainings um that we have at the beginning of the school year are rooted in law. And so um we talked at the end of the year with the Diversity and Equity Steering Committee. Around what we could mandate and what we would probably have to say that we will offer training. Um, and so what we would have to do is start to rework into trainings, like we've had training around universal design for learning. Um, for a number of years and we'll continue to offer that, but now we would go um as we do that. To look at specifically, how do we help people understand further what neurodiversity is? When we speak to um trainings around IEPs and 504s, that already has started to pick up. Some of this um information, but should become more specific as we continue. So it's it's going to filter into how we discuss IEPs, how we discuss 504 plans, and how to discuss the app accommodations.
Does that term provide training not necessarily means that we will give training to everyone, but we will just have an opportunity for anyone who wants to?
It was, it was more general. Originally, it was, it's, we're going to mandate training by staff members, but we don't have the authority to do that. Generally without uh it being rooted in law or a DESI regulation.
Is that clear enough in that wording? Because if I say I'm going to provide Sarah a car, I'm going to give her a car.
Right.
Offer?
So we could say training will be available to staff. I suppose we could do it that way if you want to make it even more general.
I think so. I just, again, like if we're.
No, and this is.
Policies in place, I think we have to have the actions to match, or else the policies are not in effect. Again, like if we are the body that's approving them. We have to know that the steps are in place, that they are actually going to go into effect.
If the committee, they had input on the this policy.
Diversity and Equity Steering.
They did. So would you want to bring that back to them? Or are you comfortable?
Um. I mean, we have two members here. I, we did have this discussion over two different meetings. Um, it's challenging, though, I think, uh. For folks who haven't been through the full process of adopting policy to understand. So what they did here is that we have to take these policies and then continue to go through them. Um, and we also want to have the leadership team put eyes on them because that's the group that ultimately has to implement them.
Have they looked at that through these?
They've seen some of this, but they haven't seen the entire packet.
I'm just trying to get as much uh approved as possible. So if we make a matter of change to ACC and still approve it tonight, then we should potentially.
But to the point you made, no, they have not seen this entire revision.
But if we approve some tonight, or do you?
They will get them at the next leadership team.
Okay.
I would just say then flip one more page, because it's, yeah, like, we have this center of like. Of everyone in our community, ELS, E L P S commit to, and again, number one is provide training.
So we would say we'll commit to, number one, training will be offered each year to staff members to ensure that they understand neurodiversity.
Right, that's the change.
That would be the change.
It's the two locations.
Where's the first one?
Oh, and start the policy where the yellow umbrella is, you flip it. The second page, it says provide training to.
Right, yep, right.
Right, so we are.
Again, and there's a longer set of commitments that we as a school district are making.
That's ACE though, that's another.
Not in my packet. I have another page.
I don't have that. I have that.
That's this page here. It's the same page. I think it's duplicated.
I have it twice.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that.
The only one.
It looks like that.
Oh, there was an issue with the printer at one point, so maybe.
Oh, okay. I have, sorry, but I have this paper.
Okay, yeah, throw that left one out.
Okay, so just get one list, one, one through five.
So just the one changed then?
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else good on ECC with the one revisi- uh revision? Yeah, okay. ACE.
Okay, um.
Nope, what's meant?
I just, number four. Making every effort to ensure that new staff members who are neurodivergent are paired with a neuro-aware mentor. How are we qualifying them?
That one's challenging.
A lot of years. Like I think.
That's why it does make every effort, because we may not be able to do that.
But again, then how are we defining without possibly infringing on some?
Yes.
Someone's personal right.
Personal rights, not disclose that they are neurodivergent. And who's making that decision and who's making that determination? So if we're not able to do some of these things, I just don't want to see us put.
Right.
Things.
Them in here.
We can't.
Actually.
Actually do.
I'm going to take that out then?
It may make sense to take it out.
Just take out four.
Because you're not.
We're going to support our staff in any way. Our staff is our staff. So I don't know if this is necessary to put in at all. Okay, scratch it. Heather, what do you, what do you think of that, Heather?
No, I agree that it would be hard to do that. I'm just thinking like, you know, if there's some sort of survey where you give information. And like you divulge it if you want to, um, but that would be tricky.
I think the challenge, though, is um finding mentors.
Right.
That would actually be able to.
Right.
It up.
Yeah.
That they're qualified to do that.
Right.
Right. Like there's a level of.
Right.
Awareness, like, and I just don't want to see us put ourselves in a situation where the best of intentions actually.
Put ourselves in a worse situation, yeah, yeah. No, it makes sense. And and this is, uh, as Heather knows, because we've had um many different meetings reviewing all of this, why this is so challenging. Because the committee was fantastic in pushing us forward. It's a question of how well we can implement any part of these different revisions. Uh, which is why it's getting this thorough discussion here and certainly can be brought back for more discussion.
And then we have school spaces as delineated in two A, like that is in every building. And we've staffed, not staffed it, but we've resourced it to a level.
We don't have um necessarily to that level where every, every space in every building is identified for folks. What we would have to do is actually start to identify those spaces.
Um, I think D as a teacher and parent could be a little, obviously not the. The um public shaming or anything like that, but I think a lot of staff still use types of parts or incentives, definitely incentives. And so I think that how it's presented or how the um. The punishment reward systems are presented and we have to provide training, because I think that a lot of people are using.
Yeah.
That so. And so if an incentive, what, you know, has to be achievable or something like that. And I know, you know, one of the main authors of this has done a ton of research on how that, because you're right, I used incentives all the time. Yeah. Classroom, but how that impacts kids. So I don't know. Might be interesting to have them talk to us about that or. Saying reward by training, yeah, or, but what they're looking for too. I know that we are, and again, it's hard to quantify all of these things, but we're bringing in the regulated classroom training. Which is all about helping kids to self-regulate, right? So it's more proactive rather than reacting. Um, but, yeah.
So, thank you for the regulated classroom training. That would be something that is a little bit more universal. Because we're going to be doing that. Meadowbrook is doing that. And it was something that the Meadowbrook. Uh, teachers, specifically when we met with the kindergarten group, were asking for. But it does go back to, say, the first one where, you know, maybe we have to say training will be offered. Because the other schools, although they will get some training, may not buy in as much as Meadowbrook is.
But then I go back to the question, if not, and this is where I just want us to like be real about this. If I'm an educator and I do not choose to go to the training, how am I then accountable to a policy that I am not aware of the specifics? That I should be adhering to in my classroom? Like, if we're going to have a policy, I think we have to have a mechanism by which we're saying. You have to be trained, because by not being trained, you are not able to adhere the school committee's policies on neurodiverse students.
We cannot require that training, you're saying. Remember you're saying?
Generally, it's, it's when you have mandated trainings, there are certain mandated trainings that all schools have to go through at the beginning of the year. And those are rooted in both law and DESI regulation.
Can they also be rooted in policy?
You can, um.
But that would change our professional development structure within the district.
It would.
Probably need an MOU or.
Correct. We would have to negotiate it, which is the other discussion that we had. Um, what was it? Rather a quick discussion, because. Well, a lot of these had even stronger wording when they were originally drafted. And one of the things I said is, you know. CELEA going to support that, which is hard for, you know, is putting the members that were on that committee on the spot. Because they're not necessarily on the executive board, nor is the executive board necessarily even looked at this.
Right.
So I would agree, you you would have to probably negotiate something around mandated training. It's not rooted in.
Mm-hmm.
We wouldn't be able to do this kind of training on like an after-school day or something like that.
You don't have many after-school days.
I know, but I mean, if this is something that's really important. I mean, I understand that there's not that many, but.
Nor do we necessarily have it identified, like regulated classroom is something um. That we had offered as an option and it really was popular. And so that's why then we did train the trainer. And all schools will get a certain amount of that. So yes, they're, they're all going to have um the basics of it. Um, Meadowbrook, I think, given uh how much interest there was, they're going to have. They're going to be more versed in that all the way through the school year.
But in terms of a training like this, I'm imagining like we could create something that was. Asynchronous, right? And so they could get one ELPS university credit for it. But again, to mandate it.
Yeah.
You have to get that MO, MOU.
Okay, and if we're putting a policy in place, we just have to have the action steps.
Yep, all right. That one's coming back to us then too.
All right, so we'll look at, that's right. We'll look at D, we'll look at um. A, I think.
A, G, one, I think out before.
Still got all of them. Okay, thank you. Looking for some things to do over the next couple of days.
You didn't answer this.
No. Um, okay.
This one's simple.
Um, so this is um policy ACE, which was in existence prior to. Um, this review, and this is simply taking the word handicap in the policy name. And replacing it with the word disability.
And ACE slash E.
Which is in accordance with the MSCA, which.
Sure.
MAS.
MAS.
Perfect sense.
Using the word disability then. And the only other thing uh would be to take out the name of the person who's no longer employed in the dis.
Not there yet.
Oh, okay, sorry. Got excited.
All right, so this is, uh, this would be something that maybe should go in the procedure manual, but um it's always been in the online policy manual. And so it's ACE dash E. E stands for exhibit, using the nomenclature of E C. Um, so since it was there and it is attached to um ACE. In terms of actually going through. Um, as in the American Act, we updated it, because if you look at the original policy. Back quite a few years in terms of referencing the task. I'm not sure that you want names in there, you know, at all, but you know, maybe you reference the title. So we did update it um with my mind.
You're asking if ACE E would then become ACE R?
Um, no, I think unless the committee would like to do that, I think you can keep it as.
Yeah, keep it.
It's always been in the manual. It sits in the manual now. We can revise it and send it back up to um. The M A C posts our online manual, and so we send any revisions that are approved to M A C.
Any questions on those two, ACE, ACE dash E? So if my tally is correct, we are content with AC, ACE, and ACE dash E. We're looking to send back or ACB, ACB, ACB slash R, ACB, and ACC.
And ACDS.
And not AC. Um, how about a motion then? So I would entertain the uh a motion to approve those three at least, so we can get something done. That's if folks are uh okay with waiving the second reading, which typically we would do, but in anticipation of. Continuing policies coming, I would be okay with accepting those three.
Right, and move to approve.
AC.
AC. Policy ACE policy, ACE dash C. As reviewed. From the ELPS Diversity and Equity Steering Committee.
Motion made by Antonella. Second by Amy. It's the other discussion. There, please.
Hi.
Those opposed nay. Next series four to zero, and then we'll look for the other four to come back.
Yep, we're bringing those back, um.
This stuff too.
And undertaking as the revisions, we won't need the existing policies there. Save a little paper.
If I can, I'll try to coordinate it with a leadership thing, so maybe they can have some. Um, procedure. Different buildings.
Okay, good work. Progress.
Shoring out.
And then it's football games, like football practice, some. Them out.
Yes.
They're maple shade, yeah.
You have to go.
No, no, well, they sent us a message if we have to take them, but he walked with his friend who was right down the street, so. Just on.
You have to leave, we we can cover it too.
Can I just cancel, right?
You can do that too.
No, I'm just kidding.
You've got that authority, Sam. It worked, it happened. We've got that authority, Sam. It worked, it happened. Anyway, let's move on. We have the search process for the district, uh, the director, excuse me, of Student Support Services.
Okay, um, so just to give you a sort of a summary of this outline, um. What we would hope to get out of this meeting is um. One school committee member to sit on um the first round of interviews and doing some screening. The posting has been up since um August first. It closed at midnight last night. And um we do have some um good candidates that are in there. Not as many as I had hoped, but um nonetheless, good candidates that are in there that we moved forward to that first committee. And so the um first committee would be composed of school committee member to be selected tonight. Um, a lottery draw of a building administrator. We did streamline this a little bit because the last search, um, the committee. Filled this entire room, um, and it seemed a little bit unwieldy. So we're trying to streamline it as well as um. That. Search process um was over two months' time. We're trying to speed up the pace a little bit on this one, given the time of year we're in, um, where school's gonna open next week.
Mm hmm.
Um, so the administrators know uh from our meeting last week and hopefully I'll have names to off from um. Tomorrow or Wednesday. Um, also, we'll have a central office administrator, and I think we have three individuals that are interested in being part of that lottery process. Um, Unit A is going to conduct their process of selecting two teachers and one paraprofessional on the twenty first. And um. Working with uh the two individuals in our student support services um. That uh who work in a clerical position. And I've already reached out to the president of the CPAC committee, uh. And she is interested in being part of this committee, and I'm reaching out to another parent um and hope to have that solidified tomorrow.
So with teachers not and paraprofessionals not being back.
Mm hmm.
Is it that all names are entered into the lottery and then whoever's pulled?
Now, the way the Unit A conducts the lottery is they send out their messaging that this is how many we're looking for, and anyone interested, please submit their names by X date.
All the members are notified.
All the members.
What email?
Through, yeah, which they're used to. That's their process.
No, but two.
School email.
School email.
But if I'm not, I'm just saying we're putting forth the process. Not obligated to check three.
It's a, it's a Unit A, it's a Unit A issue. It's not our issue because they're picking their own. They could, they could pick them out of them.
Forcing a process that is.
No, we're like, we're telling Unit A, give us two, and they're gonna pick it. It's basically what they're telling.
It's widely known out there.
Yeah, we'll be all right. What time of day are you thinking that company might meet?
Uh, I think it's gonna have to be at the end of the day in order to make sure that people are available. So I would say we're looking probably at. After three, maybe even after four.
Yeah.
I'm gonna push back again, though. Unit E, how do we know that they have a computer at home? How do we know that they have access to that? We provide our Unit A with laptops.
It's not for us.
We actually do provide Unit E with.
Okay.
The membership. They pick out of their membership. So the union itself.
I understand they pick out of their membership.
The union is responsible for their own process. We, they can, they can do it however they want.
Does a union reach out to their membership by their personal email?
No, they do. They do their school email.
So that's what I'm saying is you are not.
But they're.
Taking your school email while you are technically not. Responsible for it. I don't think that that's providing access to everyone to enter their name in.
Is there a scheduled meeting on August twenty first?
They have already put it out um last week that they are gonna conduct this on um August twenty first.
It wasn't a set preset meeting?
No.
No.
The union.
No.
What choice do they have? I mean, this is of critical nature. We have to get this position filled.
Unit A and Unit E do get um. District laptops. Unit A's are our Macs, Unit E's are Chromebooks, all of them have that. Um, if we were not to get generally a response. Uh, they generally let me know, and then we go into further advertising or they do.
And a lot of times this, these things happen over the summer. I've never heard a pushback of someone saying, oh, I wish I'd known I could have been the.
When do we put together a, a search committee inclusive of? Unit A and Unit E. I'm saying since I've been on the board, which is now going into year seven. That happened over the summer where we cannot guarantee that everyone has read a message that allows them the option to participate. I just don't want to see like the process get stopped before it starts.
Uh, the principals actually. Do that quite often. And they give up, you know, especially if it's an assistant principal is being hired. Um, and then it always seems to work. We, we have.
You know, the director of student services left and you have a high interest of being on committee to pick the new one, and chances are we're gonna pick a new one over the summer, you're gonna pay attention. And ignorance is no excuse because if the information is provided, I'm not, I think, I think you're overreading this.
Overrated.
You're overreading it, Sarah, though, I think.
Read your email.
ELEA also has their own private Facebook group. Not that that's even, you know, but that's another way that they're getting out information. Yeah, I'm not on it. I just heard that.
No, they do have their own.
All right.
Does any, would anybody like to represent the school committee on such a?
Um, just to let all of you know, no, that's fine. Um. Once this committee has conducted interviews and identified hopefully at least two finalists, then we would submit those finalists through the full school committee. And then those uh interviews would take place with the full committee. So you're gonna have one person who's on both committees. Yeah.
So we hired superintendent assistants who.
So this can, and so by, by law, um, technically the hires are yours. But you have a good point because as I continue to discuss things like this with other superintendents. Often what happens is the superintendent runs the entire process and then forwards one candidate to the committee.
Yeah.
This is my recommendation.
Okay.
In the committee.
Fair.
However, we've always worked much more in partnership around these type of positions. So although I'm helping facilitate. I figured the whole committee should be involved and at least that screening committee has had a chance to offer up two finalists that they feel confident in, that they feel confident.
Mass general law in every forum, the school committee hires or no?
They, they reference um that the. School committee has direct hiring power over superintendent and business manager.
Right.
But in there, a few sentences down in that same document talks about the special.
Okay. Okay.
It's probably less stringent than the first two. But um.
Not required, but you're recommending you.
Correct. I, I think bringing forward, I think I, you know, I don't necessarily have to bring forward um a teacher hire, but. In some way or form, uh, when, way, shape or form, the school committee has to be involved in that final piece when the hiring is up.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd be interested.
No, no, it's.
I won't, I won't, I'm gonna be out of the country for a little bit of time, so I'm not gonna be back until the tenth of September. So much of this is gonna happen when I'm not here.
Got it.
It's subject to change, but um hopefully if we can stay on the timeline.
And then are we following the same process at that point that we did last time with? Live interviews?
Yes.
We're.
And live liberation?
Full committee. We have to.
Yeah.
Well, last time.
Unless, and so this is where you, unless you want it to be where. We develop, you know, both the um. Screening in first round and then a second committee for the second round, and we just forward one individual. Then there's no deliberation. You either agree with that recommendation or you don't. That, that's how it has happened in other districts. Give you an example.
And if we don't pick that person.
Mr. Fredette, who is um now an assistant superintendent, that was the process that Hampshire followed. So there was just one finalist recommended to the um school committees.
Do you have a preference?
I think we should follow what we did because we're so close to the initial process. That it makes sense to follow.
Do it again.
A similar, I just know we had a lot of hard conversation around how those deliberations were going to unfold. So I would not. Want to see us, if we're going this route, to change how we deliberate and how we vote from how we did it.
Last time.
Case.
Right.
Uh, two years ago.
Yeah.
I think we have to be consistent personally if we're gonna stay true to a very similar format as last.
Does make it challenging because you are deliberating in, in public.
Mm hmm. I just want to make sure we're.
It is.
Clear on that, though.
But I think it's important too that the committee is able to see. Um, the people that have made it through.
Sure.
And not just have one voice.
Okay, so we're gonna stick with this process. We'll appoint a school committee member and keep going.
Okay.
Any other interests other than Antonella? Okay, a motion to appoint. I would do it only if you don't want to, but if you would like to, I don't need to do it. So you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. So can we have a motion to appoint, please?
I move to approve Antonella. Um, sorry, as. The school committee representative for the. Search process for the director of student support services.
Excellent. Motion made by Kate. Second by Sarah. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed nay. That carries five to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does the. The screening and first interview committee, we would look at all of the candidates?
Um, I'm gonna go first through and check licensure.
Okay.
And then um anyone that does not get a limited. Training, I would.
Okay.
Eventually. Let this full committee. Select hopefully um, there are eight candidates. Between five and six of those.
Moving right along.
The same thing.
Uh, new business approval of ELEF twenty twenty five grand recipient check in the amount of fifty four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents. Who's gonna? Have forty?
Um, so. If you, if you look in your packet, you um. See a letter that's addressed to me regarding the um grants uh that were awarded by the East Long Meadow. Educational Endowment Fund. And they do an incredible job supporting us uh every year. I wanna say fifty four thousand dollars is a new. High. You know, that we've had grants to that level before. So on the second page, you see where those grants and for what those grants are. Um, where those grants are going and for what um thoughts they are. Breaks out so that you see, um, you know, they're going to a number of schools. Fortunately, uh. I think they were hoping for more. Um, grant applications, but they did, as you said, um, in that second paragraph, receive uh. Grants totaling sixty two thousand, seven hundred and thirty seven dollars and ultimately the order for fifty four thousand, three hundred and eighty eight dollars and forty cents. Um, so we're excited um with your acceptance of these grants to get this money out to. The um grant recipients so that they can start purchasing um.
Sure, we're gonna accept the check then. Yes, so I'd entertain a motion to accept, please.
And make a motion to accept. Uh, the ELEF twenty twenty five grant check in the amount of fifty four thousand, three hundred and eighty eight dollars and forty cents.
Motion made by Antonella. Second by Amy. Any, any other discussion? Just certainly thankful for the work of the ELEF committee. Uh, they put. To supplement. Of our students. So thank you to all of those. Folks, uh, motion made and seconded. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed nay. That carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
You. And our last order of business, approval of the bachelor one rate for the East Longwood High School long-term substitute for chemistry.
So um this is a retired teacher who uh last year helped us out uh in a similar. Position uh where there was a leave of absence. Generally, um, in accordance with the policy, we think though with bachelors and one. If we have a long-term sub who begins the year with us and is looking to um stay for the year, where we have a situation where there's a leave that's gonna take the entire year.
Or.
We start um at your daily sub rate or our daily sub rate and on day thirty one, after thirty consecutive days of teaching, we go to bachelor's one. This would be um. With your approval, allow this individual to start at bachelor's one, start of the school year. Uh, and she's ready to start the school year and, you know, have everything set up, uh, cause the individual is on leave. That was approved at the end of the year.
Okay, questions? Interims, comments?
We had approved, sorry, one more.
Yep.
Um, last year, the school committee had approved bachelor's one rate for a similar type of situation.
There.
Are similar situations arising? As a result of something? I just think it's interesting, like two years in a row. Starting with.
Different teacher, subject matter is.
Right, the subject.
Right, believe.
Okay, no, I'm just asking like if it's something beyond that.
No, I mean, they're not uh leaves that um. Incredibly unique.
Okay.
I move to approve. The bachelor one rate, the East Long Meadow High School long-term substitute for chemistry.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Kate. Any other discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. That motion carries five to zero.
Okay, thank you. That's the page now.
Okay, without further ado, uh, we are at the completion of our meeting. Take a motion to adjourn, please.
Don't move.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Kate. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We are adjourned.